A meeting for the Planning Commission on Monday, December ninth, 2024 is hereby called to order at 6:31 PM. Iris, can you call roll, please?
Moreno?
Here.
Mitchell is absent. Najak is absent. Miles?
Here.
Scanoni?
Here.
Fly is absent and Twin. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mboop, do we have a, an update for the City Council?
Very short one. Good morning. So I have some, I think we, last council, the most important thing was the CPEC, you know, you, the climate friendly and equitable, you know, like was very well presented. The council moved to approve the one that there were like an alternative of two, one of the, the October one and the November. We adopted the October one and, but we added the payment of the fifteen hundred dollars. So staff will return next week, I think it's next week, for council to definitively adopt that thing. I think it was very important. It was very hard for planning. It was also very hard for council. There were people from the neighborhood who came, but honestly, staff did a very wonderful job to explain to people that, you know, DLCD decided certain things that Barley Kusuga will try to explore as a way to mitigate all these things we are deciding. That was important. We also something that the Community Development Code also were, I don't know if I can go over what Attorney Pun presented to the council on, and, yeah, it was the, okay, no, it was ordinance twenty nine fifty-four. I don't think I need to go over the things. It's a-
No, I presented annual code amendments that do not relate to the Community Development Code.
Yeah.
So close as you come as a tree code, but it didn't affect any criteria, so.
Yes.
So as far as the Planning Commission is concerned, I don't think-
Yeah, okay. So I think that's what, and you know, just to tell people how it was very exciting after Thanksgiving, the tree, the community tree or the holiday tree or whatever tree you call it, Hanukkah tree, Christmas tree, Kwanzaa tree, or like the, the mayor said, the community tree with his beautiful poem. It was wonderful. So that's meaning that we are on the holiday season and, yeah, I think if there is no other questions, I have to join the Youth Leadership Council, their meeting next door, so.
Any questions? Well, thank you for the update and happy holidays to you.
Thank you and a happy holiday. Can I go to?
Next on the, on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes and for the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four minutes, we have a, a correction. They are not action minutes, they are Planning Commission minutes for October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes as Planning Commission minutes, not as action minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So question, do, does that mean that they pass, they don't pass if we don't have?
Well, a majority of those present eligible to vote. So you have four people, three voted aye, so a motion passes.
Thank you for the clarification. Next, we have the approval of minutes for November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. As presented, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve them.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So Iris, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, we do not.
Thank you. And then we have the Commission for Citizen Involvement, general updates. I don't have any in front of me by any chance, Iris. Iris, do we have any that?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Then we have a work session, the twenty twenty-four year-end review and twenty twenty-five work plan preview, work session number one, to review and provide direction on the commission's top three accomplishments from twenty twenty-four, as well as the top three themes or ideas that the commission would like city council to consider in their twenty twenty-five goal setting session. So we have Eric Olson presenting.
Thank you, Chair Moreno. I appreciate it. Yeah, you know, we're really just wanting to take this opportunity to review what we've done throughout the last year as the commission and talk about the top three sort of accomplishments that we'd like to parlay to council as well as the top three, as you mentioned, sort of goals or themes that we'd like to approach for next year. I will add that, of course, this is sort of in an advance of the Boards and Commissions Summit, so this is something that we've been asked by staff for City Manager's Office to put together for council to consider. Of course, they're going to put this into a big sort of memo to produce in advance of that Boards and Commissions Summit, so ultimately that's kind of where this is going to be funneled. And then, you know, I think the Boards and Commissions Summit, as well as some of the goal-setting retreat for council will potentially, you know, involve further discussions or refinements of this work, but, you know, those conversations will really play out in January and February of next year. As I'm sure you're aware, the Boards of Commission Summit is already planned and some of you have already RSVP'd, so I appreciate that, but just a heads up to folks that haven't RSVP'd, they'd love to see you there and it's a great opportunity to kind of sit around with everybody from all the different various boards and commissions in the city and talk about their work and sort of shared goals moving forward. So that will be, yeah, on January ninth, I believe that would be, I'm trying to do the math in my head right now, but I believe it's usually on Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah.
Is, can you hear me? Is that on? There you go. Is the format the same as last year?
It will be very similar, yeah. They're using last year as a bit of a template.
Yeah, okay. No, it was really a, a good experience.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, I'll, I'll be there this year. I wasn't able to come last year just having a, a child, so I wasn't there last year, but I think if it was like the years that I've attended, it's definitely a great conversation and good to be involved, so we encourage all commissioners to join. So really, you know, this is kind of an opportunity to talk about this with you all at the Planning Commission meeting. We haven't necessarily had this opportunity in recent years just due to timing and just kind of there's been a bit of a mix-up in terms of, not a mix-up, but a change in the way that we go about goal-setting for the year. And it's usually, you know, I think we're trying to balance a bit of getting some input from the commission as well as making sure we're consistent with city council goals and priorities, so this is kind of a, a good opportunity to hear from the commission and have that voice be represented. Now, of course, there's a lot of things that we might be tasked with from city council that can be very time-consuming, so that's just something to keep into account as well as we talk through this. So I will just kind of really briefly go over our sort of big accomplishments for the year and then we can pause, talk about those before we move into sort of things to take on for next year. And I will not have like a visual presentation, I'm just going to basically go through the staff report. Of course, we adopted the annual Community Development Code amendments for twenty twenty-three at the beginning of this year, so that was kind of our first major accomplishment for the year. We also recognized a new neighborhood association, the Mary's Landing Neighborhood Association that's now one of, you know, the city's many neighborhood associations and have been fairly active so far, so, you know, that's certainly a success there. Certainly, you know, in terms of workload, one that required the highest amount of staff dedication was the housing production strategy and lots of sort of outreach and public engagement related to that that we conducted this year and, you know, it really feels like we finally hit a big milestone for that project and finally we're able to adopt that sort of final version of the document. Of course, it's a working-ish document in that we have to continue to refer to that for our work in the next six years, but it is at least adopted and we have that to sort of at least be able to lean on for a little while. We adopted some amendments to the stormwater code to maintain sort of consistency with the state's stormwater permit requirements. That was something that we discussed here with Sonia Johnson, who was the project lead on that. Of course, very recently, most recently, we discussed amendments to the Community Development Code and Comprehensive Plan to comply with the climate-friendly and equitable communities, citywide parking reform, regulations from the state, and that's something that as Commissioner Mboop just mentioned, or I'm sorry, Councilor Mboop just mentioned, we are going to present findings to the council in next Tuesday, so a week from tomorrow on the seventeenth. So that would be the ultimate sort of, you know, final, you know, ending point for that project and the amendments would be sort of active or they would be effective as of January seventeenth, so a month after. So that is some progress there and we more or less met the deadline that we were expected to meet to, or by the state. Of course, we also adopted Comprehensive Plan amendments to incorporate the wastewater treatment plant as a project and sort of reflect the city's current plans, as well as we adopted as, as the Planning Commission at least, our portion of some at least larger work to the code, but sort of the Community Development Code piece was adopted here for the NFIP or National Flood Insurance Program, FEMA's changes for that. We have proposed some changes to comply there. A bit of an update on that, we, at least as of this report, had expected that to go to public hearing on December seventeenth. We're still as, has been sort of indicative of the project overall so far, really been waiting for direction both from FEMA, from the federal government, as well as the state on a few things and, you know, have some concern about whether or not these, the sort of FEMA model ordinance would be considered clear and objective and meet the sort of state's clear and objective rules for housing. So we are holding off a little bit longer on that. Currently, we have a tentative plan for that hearing to take place on the seventh of January, so bumped out since the date of this report. So yeah, that is something that we expect to handle soon, to finish soon, but we can't necessarily say it's been completely taken care of at the council level at least as of yet. So that kind of brings us to the sort of end of the projects we've more or less completed, at least here at the commission, we adopted findings for the NFIP code amendments. Other pieces that we worked on last year but are still somewhat ongoing, one piece there relates to mandatory adjustments for Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven, which kind of, you know, we, we generally refer to as variances, although the state has deemed them mandatory adjustments for this purpose. Basically, you know, there's certain, you know, as, as you would imagine from the title, mandatory adjustments that the state is sort of saying that cities must approve as long as they meet certain criteria. We are going to be applying for an exemption from those requirements, so that's per guidance from, from city council. We will keep you updated on that. We are planning to come back and talk about this piece as it relates to the whole sort of implementation of housing production strategies in late February, so on February twenty-fourth, I'll be giving you kind of an update on where we're at with the various different pieces of the housing production strategy that we're tasked with working on here in twenty twenty-five. So anyway, that's kind of related to the potential comprehensive code audit or comprehensive audit of the Community Development Code as we've been calling it. So because of that overlap, I will just kind of give you a refresher on that, just kind of tell you, you know, kind of where we're at in the process, but we're currently working to apply for that exemption right now. We weren't given much time by the state, so, yeah, we have about a month to do that, so we're trying to, to get that all taken care of and we'll come back and talk to you kind of about the results shortly thereafter. And of course, we're currently kind of getting in, into the thick of working on the twenty twenty-four annual Community Development Code amendments, so that's, you know, obviously an annual thing, but just would point out that the Community Development Code amendments that we discussed at our last work session with Evan Fransted, there were a number, or at least one, a couple of actually different policy items that are going to kind of spin off and become their own projects. So one of those will be the home occupation standards that we're going to take a little bit more of a deep dive into and bring back to the Planning Commission in late January, or at least have our first work session on that in, in late January. And in addition, there will be some pieces that will be kind of wrapped up into the larger tree code update effort. So anyway, there, there are a few pieces that are spinning off, but for the most part, that package of amendments, as you saw it, are going to be moving forward in some fashion, so. So yeah, that really gets us to the end of this year. I know, you know, obviously there's certain things that you relate to council goals, particularly the housing production strategy, but I thought I'd just open it up for discussion as to the main sort of accomplishments that you want to point out for city council from the Planning Commission. So I guess I'll pause there and, yeah, hopefully have a discussion.
Do you want us to choose the top three?
Right, I mean, I, in the past, have kind of had to choose for the Planning Commission due to not really having much time or handle this via email, so, you know, I, I have some thoughts on this, of course, but yeah, I'm looking for any input that you might have on that. You don't necessarily have to vote through all of this necessarily tonight, but if you have strong opinions, of course, I want to hear those or something, you know, that I think I should know if I'm putting this all together.
Well, having said that, to start with, does anyone have any strong opinions about any of these? Well, I already read it, so.
Yeah, so I, you know, I have listed nine here. We completed quote-unquote about seven. I tried to go through them again, you know, I can just try to really quickly remind, so that we got the stormwater code amendments, we did amendments for the National Flood Insurance Program, wastewater treatment plant, there was the new neighborhood association, CPEC or citywide parking reform, housing production strategy, and then, of course, the annual code amendments. For two years, so that's just a quick, quick overview of the different projects at least.
Right. And you can only put three in?
Yes, all boards and commissions, we have to choose our top three, so.
Now, I'm gonna see if Evan's paying attention. Can you cheat and put three and then A, B, C, D?
I don't know, I, I have to enter it in, it's like a form, it's a laser fish form that they're using for the submission, so I think it's pretty limited in terms of the number of characters, but if we, we really want to say more than three, then sure, we can do that.
Well, I mean, there's so much work here that's been done over the year by these great people that came in and presented, that I, I think just three is sort of not fair to them.
Well, I think in the case of at least, you know, like housing production strategy and parking reform, those can kind of come together under like state compliance.
And it was a big one.
I guess, you know, to me, that's sort of, you know, part of the same, you know, state compliance process, though if you're trying to squeeze in more references, then.
Yeah, and of course, the citywide parking reform, CPEC work was a part of the housing production strategy as well, so there's some certainly overlap there. So if we were to do that and combine those into one and sort of say the CPEC is a housing production strategy, so we're throwing it in there, what were, what would the other two be that you would want to highlight here? Not to sort of diminish anybody else's work, I guess, but just in terms of, you know, big accomplishments, I guess, and acknowledging that they're all important, I guess, is, is what I would mention, and we're not trying to, you know, sort of, again, diminish the importance of anything.
Plus, I wouldn't call it cheating, I would say we're just trying to be more efficient. Right?
I didn't get a response, so I was seeing if he, he never even looked up. He said, oh, it's Dave talking again. I'm not even gonna pay attention.
Well, the only strong opinion I have about any of this is that your team does all the work. We see the tip of the iceberg and we get to, you know, talk about it in a public forum, but you guys do all the work, so where do you see the focus?
From, yeah, from the last year, you know, I do think that the new neighborhood association is a really nice thing that I've never seen happen here in my years of work, so that's, that's always a, a good thing to, to highlight. They had not had representation and it wasn't a huge lift necessarily, but I think it's a really important achievement, at least.
Noteworthy.
Yes, absolutely.
And there's been a lot of activity there, right?
Yeah, yeah, there, you know, obviously, there's the new Mercy Green Bray development that happened, that occurred in there and sort of, they formed after a lot of that work had been completed and once it was already under construction, but I think that was maybe gave them a wake-up call that there was no neighborhood association, even though I think a lot of folks in that area were, you know, involved and sort of engaged with throughout that process. So yeah, I think they're certainly, yeah, they, they've become a little bit, you know, more active in terms of the larger sort of citywide neighborhood association group. That's, it's helpful. Some of the neighborhood associations really don't take a huge role in that, so.
Okay. Well, there's two. And a half.
All right. And yeah, you know, I think, you know, I don't necessarily always want to do the annual code amendments, because they're annual, so it's hard to say this year is more important than last year's or something. It's something that we're kind of always doing, I guess. The NFIP work is still not really complete, so I would say either the stormwater or wastewater treatment plant work. I think the stormwater code amendments are probably a bit more sort of discreet project in of their own, where the wastewater treatment plant related code amendments are really kind of a, you know, it's a support sort of effort for that larger wastewater treatment plant effort, I guess, if that makes sense. So we adopted code and sort of cleaned up the comprehensive plan, but that's kind of a, a much larger effort to sort of get that all sort of running, up and running in the way that, you know, they're, they're currently envisioning it. So I don't necessarily want to take credit for, for those wastewater treatment plan, that's certainly an engineering-driven project. So yeah, I guess the stormwater code amendments might be the most logical other thing to include here, but I, I just, you know, just wanted to vet it with all of you first before I just kind of submit this to the Boards and Commissions folks, so.
Stormwater is fine with me.
Do you want to add anything about the, what we listened to in our last session with, with Amanda about the charging stations and kind of that, that aspect of it, or it's not really finished yet?
Right, I mean, it's still kind of not finished and, you know, I think SAB, Sustainability Advisory Board, will probably be the owners of that work ultimately, of course, she gave us an update and there are some Community Development Code amendments that are probably going to come out of it, but yeah, I think it's, in terms of this year, I don't think we can necessarily as a Planning Commission say that we take credit for it, although it is great work, of course.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll obviously hear a little bit more about that at the summit, too. We'll kind of learn a little bit more about what the other boards and commissions are up to. But yeah, that, that seems like good direction unless I have, unless anybody else has other input they want to put in.
No, I, again, I, like you had said, you know, give as much credit to the people that did all this work as you can.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, well, I guess I'll just move on to the last page here on themes or ideas that we could sort of proceed with in twenty twenty-five. Of course, we have some pretty good ideas of what we think that city council is going to ask of us, primarily with respect to number one and number five. Code audit and amendments have been something that the, sort of a comprehensive audit of the Community Development Code has been something that the council has been sort of asking us to take a look at for a while now and we're finally, we, we agreed to start that in twenty twenty-five and we're going to stick to our word, so I'll say we've carved out, you know, some sort of space within our workflow to do that, but, you know, of course, it's always changing, but regardless, you know, that is something that we need a little bit more time to get started on and finally have the ability to do so this year that council has been talking about for some time. And of course, the tree code update is a massive effort, that's something that's going to flow out of the urban and community forestry plan work that you contributed to previously and sort of spoke a bit with Jessica Nmonelu about, I think it was early last year. So, you know, you were able to contribute a bit to that, but there will be more of a role for the Planning Commission moving forward in the tree code update, particularly because it will require code amendments to be adopted by, I think, early twenty twenty-six, but it's going to sort of hit the ground running this year, so that certainly will take a good amount of staff workload as well as, you know, I expect that to be a pretty hot topic here at the commission, so. So in terms of workload, I would say those are going to be the two biggest items. Of course, rezoning for housing, that's going to be a, a large project as well, and it's kind of something that we're still working to scope internally. You know, I think a lot of this will depend on the results of our initial research, just kind of looking at different areas to explore and kind of trying to zero in on different areas of the city, but, you know, that's going to be certainly a large effort as well that, you know, will kind of be related to that code audit piece, all kind of related to that housing production strategy, both of those projects, and, you know, it's kind of hard to determine where one ends and where the other begins if we start talking about, you know, potentially tweaking standards or criteria within a certain zone to work better for housing, that starts to look kind of similar to a rezoning for folks anyway, you know, if you're talking about potentially increasing density in, in certain ways. So anyway, those projects will be somewhat related, so we might be able to kind of clump those together, I guess, maybe is one, one thing I was thinking. These are two really big projects to clump together, but we are going to be sort of scoping them together at least. And yeah, you know, I think, I would just point out with the low-income rental housing tax exemption, we're supposed to do that sometime next year, that will be a fairly small project, I think, will probably just require like one work session with the, the commission, and I don't, I don't think it's any code amendments or anything like that necessary, but I don't expect that to be a huge piece of the Planning Commission's work, but it is something that we've agreed to do. And with respect to the fair housing policy and education, that is something we actually already have scheduled for January twenty-seventh, we're actually going to have somebody coming in from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon to talk about affirmatively furthering their housing, so we'll get sort of an entree to that issue from the Fair Housing Council and then hopefully move forward really quickly with code amendments, because they're fairly straightforward. It's actually not a code amendment, it's a comprehensive plan amendment that was recommended by the housing production strategy, but there's a lot more in terms of the policy piece, we can handle that through the comp plan amendments, but the educational piece is more ongoing and, you know, will be something that we'll focus on throughout the year as well. But those are all, you know, the first four here at least are kind of related to the housing production strategy in some way. So yeah, I think that covers the five that I have listed here, but yeah, I guess again, the caveat is that I think with one in five, we'll, we'll definitely get some direction from council. If there's anything else, though, that folks are interested in including on this list, let me know, or if you have any thoughts as to how to prioritize things, it'd be good to hear about it. And again, we're going to be having some variant of this conversation for the, the next couple of months as well, so it's not like you're not going to have any more opportunities to, to weigh in on this, but I just thought it was a nice opportunity to talk about it as a group.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else to add? Any requests?
Miles, go first.
I don't know.
No? Oh. I had a few things.
I thought you might.
One is gets presented, can we sit in the audience just to listen to, you know, kind of, in essence, I guess, your presentation and the feedback from city council on their perspective of the, of the list of things we're going to be working on?
Um, you know, I think that's basically what happens at the summit, more or less. I mean, I know it's kind of like a bend to the summit and I'm not sure it happens that directly, but, you know, basically what happens is I send these over to the city manager's office, I submit them. I don't necessarily have a one-on-one conversation or presentation to city council. I don't necessarily have a one-on-one conversation or presentation to city council about these right at this moment.
Okay, so it's not, it's not like a real formal setup? No? Okay.
No. I mean, we are, we will be part of the largest kind of package that will be used for the boards and commissions summit, I guess. That's the ultimate kind of work product.
So the, the next thing I had was, was more just, as, as we get this, these great bodies of work that come in for review, how do we get, and I don't know how you word this into the goals for next year, but how do we get more of a, an opportunity to influence as opposed to just, in a way, critique? Specifically, like the tree, the tree code, for example, you know, last year was, well, there wasn't much in there about fire prevention, especially wildfire prevention. Well, we'll catch that next year. Well, okay, so as it comes up now in 2025, how do we get a chance to maybe review it in enough in advance for that team to go back and research and say, you know, we took your comments and now we did some research and we see your point, or maybe the point wasn't a valid one, as opposed to, in many ways, it, it just feels like we're just kind of, in essence, like wordsmithing some of this stuff. Is there a chance to do that, to be, maybe in a way, be more proactive?
You know, I, you know, with respect to that piece, I know that this is not really the urban and community forestry plan was necessarily something that was put together for, you know, just as a planning commission project and necessarily just require planning commission approval. It was a pretty wide sort of effort with lots of different, you know, stakeholders, et cetera. So, you know, I think that gets back to kind of what's within our purview and what's not. And, of course, we have the tree code coming up this year that is within our purview. And, of course, you know, in terms of the adoption of potential amendments to the tree code or the community development code, there will be the opportunity for planning commission to, yeah, I mean, sort of have an active role in kind of what they think should be included there. Of course, I think, you know, the role of the planning commissioner is also to listen to sort of the research and the sort of different, sort of what we're hearing at the outreach events and incorporate all of that information as well. So I don't know if it's, you know, I'm not sure that the role of the planning commission is always to influence, but it is to make recommendations, of course. So it's to sort of, you know, kind of listen and sort of listening to what you hear in the project. And then when it comes time to adopt or consider adoption of something to sort of make your voice heard at that point, more or less. And so I do think that that's kind of the role that the planning commission will play in the tree code update. You know, it will be here. It's not as though we want the planning commission to be the only decision maker or something like that when it comes to the tree code. Of course, we're going to be, you know, just one part of a much larger outreach effort. But that would be, you know, the sort of chunk of work that the planning commission would have the most kind of purview over of that, if that makes sense. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, it's about purview to a degree here, too.
Right. And I'm all for the collaboration aspect of it. I think that's great, which kind of leads me to another point. Was, is there a way to present, and I'm curious what you guys think? Is it more of a, we touched on it before, collaboration with some of these teams at some point before it's ready to be presented? We did it, I think, once and it was really, I thought, a productive session. We had the engineers, I'm going to say it was the engineering team come in and present. We had a dialogue back and forth. You know, to me, that was really valuable as opposed to, you know, us in, in a room and we're not able to hear and discuss what other commissions are doing and be more proactive about it.
Yeah, you know, I think we've been taking every effort we can to try to increase that collaboration. I mean, we had presentations just in the last year from folks that represented the transportation advisory board, folks from the state, you know, obviously Sustainability Advisory Board, legislative updates, folks from the city manager's office can come in here and talk to you directly about these issues that aren't necessarily completely within the purview of the PC or coming to you for a decision in some, you know, you know, in the near term, at least. And, of course, I think when it comes to projects, you know, we, as with the urban community forestry plan, there was an idea to interview many different kind of boards and commissions about these things. So not necessarily to let one board or commission sort of, you know, control the sort of process necessarily, but to look and sort of have a more egalitarian, I guess, approach to the outreach in that respect. So I think that, you know, we're hearing that that was successful and I think that worked out really well. But it is, I think, difficult for folks to hear about these projects, get a little engaged with them and then not be able to, you know, I guess, approve them formally as a, as a body, as a, as a board and commission, knowing that this was something that did not need to come to the planning commission. So, you know, I, I do think that that's an effective way, though, for you to provide comments and sort of input on things that, you know, either are not going to come to you for some time or sort of indirectly but tangentially related to the planning commission. So we're certainly looking to increase that work or increase that collaborations or those types of efforts. But, you know, I can't necessarily change the purview of the planning commission here to, to, you know, be sort of the, the primary decision maker on that type of project.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. It's just more this opportunity to collaborate more with the team. So that, that, that was my, you know.
Well, as I mentioned, I think the planning commission will have a little bit more central of a role in the tree code this, this next chunk. But, of course, it's, it's not just the planning commission effort. There's a lot of other outreach involved here, but there will be something to adopt, at least, at that point, yeah.
Nate, would I be correct in, is sort of part of what you're saying, are you feeling that, you know, when it came to that process with the, the tree work, there was that sort of opportunity to like throw ideas around and, you know, sort of brainstorm rather than the process that, you know, it often takes here, which is sort of like, you know, like a draft lands on our desk and, you know, we're.
You approve or you don't approve?
Yeah, or, you know, or, you know, maybe make a line item edit or something.
Exactly. You know, to have the chance early enough in the process to be able to sit down with the team that's working on the, on the project. And the people that present are great, but, you know, maybe there's a bigger team. And just say, can we talk more about, for example, wildfire and what happens if? Have you talked to the fire departments? Could we have the fire department in here to talk about, well, what's your strategy? Are you prepared? So that when you look at the tree code, there's been, at least from my view, there's been a lot more thought put into it with respect to at least talking to other people that we get a chance to participate in. Maybe that's going on already. It's just, I don't know. You know, it's, I don't get that kind of overview. So I'm all for collaborating and I think having that fun dialogue back and forth about, you know, details that can improve would be great for everybody.
With something like you're saying with wildfire, would that manifest like, you know, we have, you know, people from, you know, different sources on wildfire, talk about their priorities and then, you know, we have someone inform us of sort of what our purview would be with regard to addressing those things.
Exactly. So we've got people, and I'm sure the tree, the tree committee, I don't know what the right term is, they're probably having those conversations, but, but for all of us to hear it together from an expert would be really, I think, valuable for everyone because we all hear a little bit of a different thing. And to say, okay, you know, actually, Lake Oswego is in pretty good shape. Great. But you don't know until you really hear that, because there's a lot of, on that topic, there's a lot of concern, you know, amongst residents, at least where I am, where there's a lot of trees. What happens if, you know, so, so that's kind of the spirit of, of my suggestion is to be able to have that brainstorming session with a group of experts.
Unfortunately, it's kind of difficult to kind of not replicate those efforts. I think a lot of those conversations have, you know, as you're mentioning, they're playing out in the public. There's a lot of outreach events and things that you go to and you hear about that conversation. But I think that is the best way, if you want to participate in that manner, to participate in that manner. We do have, you know, very structured conversations here at the planning commission where we say, we're looking for your recommendation, we're looking for your input on this thing. It's a fairly defined thing by that point because we are dealing with a lot of these state mandates. We are dealing with a lot of, you know, obviously, direction from city council on which things that we should be working on as well. So, yeah, I think, just want to point out that just in terms of efficient sort of utilization of resources, it is difficult to have the same sort of conversations play out in multiple places with the same sort of folks. And if you want to get involved with things that aren't necessarily coming to the planning commission, that would be the best way to do that, unless there is some sort of really clear overlap with respect to the wildfire piece. You know, I think there is a lot of work that's been going on here at city council in particular with respect to that. That's, again, kind of outside of the purview of the planning commission. But we, we can, you know, give you an overview on that, but we just want to make sure we're being efficient with, with staff time and not sort of asking them to do the same thing for every single board or commission in the city, right?
I totally respect that. It's just more, you know, is there, I don't want to say, how do we do a better job of it? But how do we provide those opportunities to engage, whether it's in a format like this or something else like you're referencing?
Yeah, I just, you know, the, we do have sort of, you know, sort of a set parameters on what the planning commission does need to sort of weigh in on. And so we, we want to, you know, obviously, focus our efforts here at the commission on those things. But there, there are always, you know, as again, we attempted last year, we had like six or seven different presentations in here from folks from different, you know, boards and commissions that came in and talked to you about things that aren't necessarily right on your plate at this moment. And, you know, I think that is by far, you know, the most appropriate place to ask those questions if you do want to. You know, if you do have questions about, you know, something related to, you know, the tree, sort of the fire code or as it relates to trees or whatever it might be, wildfire, you know, we can talk about that. Of course, we're happy to give you an update on what's going on. But I just, you know, I think that can, that we can handle that in certain, a number of different ways. And I'm not necessarily sure that I would recommend having folks come out and sort of recreating the public engagement for the planning commission, I guess, might just be a little bit cumbersome.
Well, I mean, you know, while those presentations were, were good and interesting, you know, if we're, you know, looking at, you know, areas of interest to, you know, certain commission members, I think what would really, you know, be more productive is to have a presentation on what, you know, what we could do, you know, if, you know, what, what would be options that, you know, for like code amendments for wildfire or something like that? If, you know, if, if we're looking at, you know, these sort of interest items, you know, it, it's great to, you know, be better informed, but, yeah, if there is a nexus with our work, then, you know, I, I think that, you know, that, that's actually what we're doing is, you know, looking at what we want to do with the code.
Yeah, I, you know, obviously, the fire code doesn't live within the community development code. So I think I just want to be very clear. A lot of this does have to do with just kind of what we're tasked with working on. You know, we do talk about community development code amendments that are relevant with respect to electric vehicle charging. I believe Amanda mentioned that we were talking about that with C-FEC, of course. But then there are other, you know, conversations that can be had about requirements for, or I guess more stringent requirements for electric vehicle charging, that type of thing. So when there is an opportunity to overlap with the community development code, we're, we're trying to be really clear about that. A lot of this, there isn't much of an opportunity. You know, I think urban community forestry plan, we talked about it early last year, you know, or this year, rather, in 2024. But really, that work is not going to be coming back to the commission until sometime in 2025. So a little bit of a gap there. But that doesn't mean that we're not going to follow up and sort of talk about what could or could not be actionable from that plan with respect to the code amendments here. But, yeah, I think, you know, obviously, where there is overlap or we can do something here as a planning department, I think that makes a ton of sense. But, yeah, I just would point out that, you know, code related to fire and wildfire management isn't necessarily in the community development code.
Well, I mean, that's just an example, but, you know, so maybe the answer is no. You know, maybe it's like, you know, we, you know, looked at it, you know, there's not really much you can do. And, you know, that's that.
Well, I think a lot of times it's like, this is a very important project that other, you know, boards are working on and we're going to have to sort of have them take the lead while knowing that we can get updates and sort of contribute in our way. But, you know, it's just, you know, unfortunately, in planning, we are kind of limited to land use. And I think a lot of times focusing on planning is being really pretty broad in application. And so I think it's hard to, to have these conversations sometimes because there is, there is a lot of overlap everywhere and only some of it can actually be something that, you know, can go in the code, of course. But, but, yeah, I think we want to encourage, we, we should be thinking of ways, I guess, to identify more overlap, I guess.
That's the key point. That's, that's the soundbite. Yeah, yeah, take, take that. That's a great summary.
Well, you know, and I just will point out that we really didn't, you know, I think I'm hearing frustration with, you know, maybe want to collaborate a little bit more with boards and commissions outside of the planning commission right now. This is something that I think, you know, the city has really just kind of started to really emphasize internally, at least, in the last couple of years. And we're kind of at the forefront of it, believe it or not. So, you know, I think we're still testing these things out and finding sort of patterns that work or patterns that don't. But for the most part, you know, I think, yeah, we, we still have work to do, of course. But, you know, we're, you know, we have sort of quarterly coordination meetings amongst the boards and commissions and really try to think about this stuff and ways to do this that aren't, that are actually going to be, you know, helpful for Amanda's electric vehicle charging project, you know, kind of time-wise, sort of making sure that that, you know, is productive both for the commission and for her later work with the council and kind of taking your input and reflecting that back. So, anyway, we are open to ideas and it's a work in progress is really the ultimate thing I'm trying to say. But we're trying, I guess, is the other thing.
And it's a good conversation to have also for the, for the good of the public because people want to know how they can get involved. They, and they, many times, they don't know all the moving parts and who does what where.
Yes.
So, I mean.
And, and just, you know, being part of this team, realizing just how many moving parts there and how big the parts are and how much work goes in to make the part move is, is really impressive. And so it's just, can we just shift a little bit to your soundbite? That's all I'm suggesting.
Yeah, you know, I guess, yeah, if it wasn't clear, you know, we are working on ways to do that even more. And I think we could, you know, potentially push, you know, in different directions. But, you know, I just would point out, we adopted code amendments that, you know, the stormwater code amendments, for instance, almost the, you know, the large majority of those were not in the community development code, but we really wanted to bring the planning commission in and sort of involve you all. But that was a pretty straightforward kind of dry project, right? And I'm not sure that was one where folks were super, you know, concerned about the content of the code amendments. It was more of a compliance exercise, more or less. So, you know, collaboration might not be easy in those circumstances.
Yeah, it's certain topics that I think warrant, or are opportunities for more collaboration.
Yeah, yeah, I will. We will certainly cover those things. And as you can see, you know, it's kind of a, almost like a reset period where we have, you know, projects that have come to a close, that have just ended, you know, this last few months that we've been working on for several years now, the C-FEC in particular and housing production strategy. Now we're scoping and really thinking about moving forward. What are we going to do for, you know, not just next year, but the next like six years here? So a lot of, yeah, a lot of sort of opportunities to, yeah, scope out our future together. So, yeah, that will be my kind of huge task that I'm working on this next couple of months is trying to scope out these projects and go for a grant. We're applying for grants and then we'll do an RFP, et cetera, for all this work. So, yeah, we're, we're finally at a phase where we can think about something besides the adoption of the housing production strategy and have a little bit more control of, you know, the different pieces that we're going to be discussing and moving forward, you know, what we're working on.
Mr. Boone, did you have something?
I just wanted to echo Planning Manager Olson's statement. And I think you're using wildfire and the tree code as kind of examples of, of areas that have some cross, cross-committee interests. But I have to jump in on the tree code side of things particularly because we've had a long-running debate as to whether or not the tree code should or should not be a land use regulation. We deal with it all the time. Your comprehensive plan has a recommended, well, your comprehensive plan needs to protect goal five resources and that is not individual trees. Those, what is goal five resource are tree groves, stream corridors, larger systems than each individual tree. Your recommended action measure, which appears on page, I think it's 16 of the healthy ecosystems, just to give you the flavor of this tension. Update and maintain the tree code to emphasize retention of overall tree canopy and to maintain the health and diversity of the urban forest while balancing private property rights with community aesthetics and livability. Note, the tree code is not a land use regulation that contains standards that are, but contains standards that are applied to development. So as you think about tree code, the only thing that, that ties chapter 50 to the tree code is 5502035, which says that when there's a minor or major development, like a partition or a subdivision, then the tree code criteria for development is considered part of the criteria for the land use. Beyond that, it's not, okay? So it's just a very narrow window where the tree. So it's just a very narrow window where the tree code meshes into chapter 50. And so most of the time, the tree code, particularly now as we have defined larger middle housing as ministerial development, not minor development, it wouldn't arise then as part of a chapter 50 analysis. So it's only when you create the road for the partition that gets applied, but not for the individual housing type of thing. So, again, that's an example where you have the urban forestry plan, okay, that's a big tool that many different committees could use into their scope, okay? But the planning commission needs to stay in its lane of land use planning and is not a mini-city council that decides everything, okay?
So, yeah, I guess another sort of thing to highlight there is what is land use is quite, you know, not just complicated, but sort of varies jurisdiction by jurisdiction in some ways, and, you know, I think the way we set things up in our code has something to do with that. So, yeah, the planning commission will certainly have a role in the tree code update, but it will be primarily for, you know, the sort of chapter 50 pieces of which there will be some, at least, but we certainly, you know, I think Jessica is looking for at least input when it comes to the other chapter 55 things.
Thank you.
Anyway, so that, as you have heard, it is not quite the clearest distinction between land use and non-land use.
Well, that's for the purposes of the commission, so I'd like to remind everyone here, we are still members of the public. We can still attend city council meetings, we can still attend some of the other commission meetings, we can still voice our opinion, we can still be part of the public and, you know, participate there in that capacity, but as far as our role as commissioners, that's very specific to what these gentlemen are saying. Yeah, so thank you.
To that, you certainly are, and you can attend city council meeting and everything, and you can note that you're a planning commission member, but you would not be speaking on behalf of the planning commission. That's a clear distinction you want to make in any statements you would make at other commissions.
Thank you.
And of course, we have our, like, sorry.
He's always keeping us out of trouble.
I know.
Well, and we have our, you know, advisory committees. Obviously, we did a lot of work with our most recent middle housing, I'm sorry, the HPS task force. We had a middle housing advisory committee as well, and there's always opportunities for folks to step up and be the representative from the planning commission, and you can kind of speak at least as a representative from the planning commission on those committees. So, yeah, there's lots of ways to get involved, and I think that there will be a lot of opportunities this year for that type of involvement.
Right.
Do we have anything else?
But just to say, point taken in terms of collaboration, looking for ways to communicate, that's something that we are, believe it or not, pushing the sort of boundaries on a little bit internally, and we'll continue to see what we can do that makes sense. And field trips, I remember that, too.
I was going to say, really? Is that it? I thought you were going to ask for a field trip.
I figured I exceeded my time allotment, so I, and he knows.
Oh, I, yeah.
He knows.
I was thinking about doing one tonight, but it's just, you know, it's dark at like 4:00 PM right now, so, yeah.
It's chilly. Let's leave that for the spring.
Yes, yes.
For summer.
Yes. But that is, that's always something I'm thinking of, just so you know.
Thinking of it. Okay, so then we have our, our top three themes, ideas, and then...
I think we can say, you know, the code audit and the tree code update are going to be the really big items this year. You know, I would maybe say that the fair housing would make sense, I guess, as adding on to that, just because that is a lot of, you know, the planning commission can take a role in that, in that you will be the first to kind of receive a sort of training on fair housing, just kind of being experts on this topic in general is really, you know, sort of what's expected of you and kind of how you can contribute, you know, outside of the actual meetings of the planning commission. But, yeah, it will be a small code amendment, but a large issue that we're going to be talking about throughout the year that should kind of guide the implementation of the housing production strategy. So that might be a good meaty third item that will, that's not kind of related, you know, I think we can put the rezoning and the code audit together there, so that would be my recommendation.
I'm sure Commissioner Najak will love that.
Yeah, I'm sure she has knowledge to share herself.
Okay, so shall we move on to the next item, which is other business? Do we have any other business to discuss?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Other than be sure to RSVP for the summit.
Yes, I think I did.
I think you did, yes.
Reminder, yeah.
And I think Dave as well.
Okay. So maybe if you can send just a quick reminder?
Yeah, yeah, Iris, let's try to do that tomorrow if we can.
Yeah. So then we have the schedule review.
All right, and I had mentioned a few things you wouldn't have seen on your most recent planning commission forecast, so we'll send this out again tomorrow, a few new items here, but our next meeting will be on January 13th, so this is our last meeting of 2024. Congratulations for making it through the year. So we'll have a work session on the 2024 annual code amendments on the 13th. Evan's been working on those since the last one, so we'll be hopefully looking at actual code language to reflect some of those concepts that we talked about at that time. So then, looking at the 27th, on the 27th, I think I mentioned this, but we're going to have a representative from the Fair Housing Council come in and talk about, affirmatively furthering fair housing, so that will be sort of a work session on that, at least we'll use it as one, sort of moving forward. Also, we're going to talk a little bit more about the home occupation standards piece, which I may recall as part of the code amendments package for 2024, we had discussed potentially expanding upon and making the home occupation standards less subjective. It's quite subjective and enforcement-based right now, so looking at adding more sort of clear and objective criteria there and something a little bit more concrete for code enforcement to use when necessary. So, anyway, we're trying to dial those in, and we'll come prepared to talk about some initial code concepts on the 27th as well. That will be Michael McNamee will be talking about that and leading that project. On the 10th of February, we'll have our next work session on kind of, you know, following up the boards and commission summit and city council goal setting, talk about specific work plan for the commission, and it's great to have this conversation right now because it gives me a flavor of what that could look like, but we're going to continue the conversation. So this is just kind of our initial top threes, and then we'll work to refine that moving forward. On the 24th of February, we're going to have a second work session on the home occupation standards as well as sort of a general update on implementation of the HPS. So that will relate to a number of the projects you see on this list, so the comprehensive code audit, rezoning for housing, fair housing, low-income rental housing, all of that, just kind of talking about our work plans for all those discrete pieces. And, yeah, I won't go too much further into the year, but you will get a new version of the schedule shortly. That should have more for you. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we are adjourned.